Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held October 18th, 2022 at 6:00 P. M. Let's have our clerk take the roll, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Kurot?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summer unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do you have anything to report? Yes, go ahead.
Last week, the library put on a astronomy 101, for lack of a better word, for basically kids. And then, I think it was Thursday night, they had a number of telescopes at the park across the street. It was mind-blowing. Saturn was clear as you could see it, with all the rings. It was unbelievable. Belfry had music playing. Kids were, a lot of kids were playing basketball. It was excellent.
Great, thanks. Go ahead.
I just had one item, but I don't know if any other councilmembers were going to report on National Night Out. I just wanted to briefly say I really enjoyed it. I did see Councilmember Krot out there as well volunteering, and I did want to thank our police department and all of the volunteers and many vendors. There were quite a few vendors from many different aspects of the community, including Steps to Recovery, several different community groups, including Yavapai County Community Health Foundation. And I also enjoyed meeting some of the volunteer dogs that Councilmember Krot works with as well. So, thanks to everybody and looking forward to next year.
Great, thanks. Anything else? No? Just a quick report out on the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition's Dinner Fundraiser. It was a smashing success. I believe we brought in somewhere close to $18,000 for the organization to serve the homeless in our community, so we're really, really proud of that. And we had some, as promised, some, some high rollers there. So, we had Congressman O'Halloran, he showed up. Former Senator Sylvia Allen was there. We had representatives from Kelly's office, Senator Kelly's office, others that I'm forgetting at the moment, but Valley mayors were there as well, Mayor Moriarty, Prudential Bauer. So, really, a great success, great entertainment, great community. Councilmember Henry was there as well, representing the city, which is awesome. And, yeah, pretty darn, pretty darn heavy. In fact, I, yeah, no, we were glad to have you. But no, great, great evening, great event. The auction was fun, I think. I mean, people really enjoyed themselves. So, just wanted to say thanks to the community, and we're looking forward to next year as well. And that's all I have. Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things here. Getting excited. Cottonwood's Trunk or Treat is returning to the Cottonwood Rec Center on Halloween night from 4:00 to 7:00. Everyone in the community is invited to attend this free event that will have trick-or-treating, bounce houses, games, and more. If you'd like to host your own trunk, contact Jack Till via email at JTEEL, J-T-E-E-L, at cottonwoodaz.gov. I will not scare as many kids this year, I promise. My outfit is downgraded a little bit, so no dress, and the makeup will be minimal. Registrations are being accepted for the upcoming Cottonwood Family Campout on November 5th and 6th. This two-day, one-night program will teach families all about the fundamentals of camping. Registration is $100 for a family of four. Visit cottonwoodaz.gov for more details. To sign up, contact Joe Sulfaro at JSULFARO@cottonwoodaz.gov. Walking on Main is returning to Old Town Cottonwood on Saturday, November 12th. This event is free and open to the folks of all ages. The Verde Valley Wine Consortium will be hosting wine tasting featuring local wineries, and tickets are available now at azwom.com. Red Rock Collision is sponsoring this year's car show. Entries are $20 per car. Visit azwom.com to register. And then, ADOT would like to notify the public that the Blowout Wash Bridge will be closed to traffic while work takes place to rehabilitate the bridge. The project is scheduled to begin in November of this year, and will be completed in early 2023. More information is available at cottonwoodaz.gov. Questions regarding the project should be directed to Jason Stevens at J-S-T-E-P-H-E-N-S at az dot, azdot.gov, or 480-751-7104. And then, the Greater Chamber of Commerce has announced the theme of this year's annual Christmas parade to be a gingerbread house Christmas. Those who would like to have a float in the parade are encouraged to register online at cottonwoodchamberaz.org. If you have any questions, please contact the Chamber office at 928-634-7593. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes is next. Regular meetings of September 6th and 20th, 2022, and special meeting of October 3rd, 2022. I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Krot seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes are approved. We have two items under unfinished business. First up, I, oh, man, I had that crossed off on accident. I'm sorry. Thanks for reminding me. No offense, members of the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. Do we have anyone here this evening that wants to address the council about an item that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and close it and move on to unfinished business. First is ordinance number 722, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood for assessors' parcel numbers 406-36-011, 406-37-242A, and a portion of 406-37-174 to change the present zoning designations of AR-43 agricultural residential and R-4 single-family multiple-family manufactured home to R-3 multiple-family residential. This is the second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, there have been no changes since we presented this to council the last time, and no additional public input.
Okay. Council, any questions, anything? No? I know the property owner's here. Do you have anything to add or say? No? Okay, great. We'll discuss it at length, so I'm ready for a motion.
I'd move to approve ordinance number 722.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great. Please read ordinance number 722 by title only.
Ordinance number 722, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for certain parcels of land, specifically Yavapai County APNs 406-36-011, 406-37-242A, and a portion of 406-37-174, so as to change the, so as to change the present zoning designations of AR-43 agricultural residential and R-4 single-family multiple-family manufactured home for those parcels to R-3 multiple-family residential. Mr. Mayor.
Great. I'm glad that's cleaned up. Next, under unfinished business is ordinance number 723, amending the zoning ordinance to allow for cluster subdivisions in certain agricultural residential zoning districts and providing definitions and standards thereof, again, or therefore, second and final reading.
Again, Mr. Mayor, no changes and no additional public input.
Okay. Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance 723.
I'll second that. So, Councilmember Wildon made the motion. Mayor seconded it. Roll call vote again, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, please read ordinance number 723 by title only.
Ordinance number 723, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending sections to add standards for optional cluster subdivisions in certain residential zones. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilmember or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Just one item this evening. It's a farm winery liquor license application for Julie A. Levy, agent for Burning Tree Cellars, located at 1040 North Main Street. Is there anybody, good evening, who would like to have this item pulled from the agenda? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Consent agenda is approved. And then, we move on to new business. Three items this evening. First up is consideration of possible approval of a shift differential program for communications and police department employees. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilbur, HR Director, and I'm here tonight to request approval of implementation and funding of a shift differential program. So, this particular program would run very similarly to the utility certification pay program that we implemented in fiscal year 2022, which has been very successful so far. This particular program applies directly to police officers and communication specialists because they are really the primary employees who work shifts. They are both there overnight, they have swing shifts. This particular program proposes adding 25 cents an hour to those officers working swing shift, and an additional 50 cents an hour to communication specialists and police officers working graveyard shifts. So, part of the reasoning behind bringing this program forward is because we have seen an increased gap in our salaries compared to other organizations around us. As you know, we did a comp study and implemented it in fiscal year 2022 first, and then all of our other neighbors really did comp studies after that, and we're seeing the gap increase. So, instead of trying to do some other mid-year change adjustments just to certain departments, we're looking at this program to help narrow that gap and to really show our employees that we appreciate that they've chosen to stay in this field. There's lots of opportunities for careers out there. They don't necessarily have to stay here, but we hope they do. So, we hope that this helps them. The cost of this program would be approximately $37,000 to $56,000 per year. That gap is kind of large because we don't expect it to be more than $37,000 based on base salaries, but it could go up to $56,000 if we had a lot of overtime. So, that gap, it's probably somewhere in the middle. But after the program has been running for a few years, we should be able to have a better handle on what that actually will look like from year to year. I've attached a program outline for you. If you have any questions about that or the program in general, I am open for questions. We're just looking for approval for the program and funding.
Okay.
So, just from what you said, it kind of brings one question up. You said you were going to implement this to, for the purposes that you stated, but you talked about continuing it. Wouldn't, wouldn't this kind of be addressed later in a budget with salaries, and then this would just kind of go away?
It could. It's still an incentive to stay in this field. I mean, generally, communication specialists are very difficult to find anyways. We currently have four openings. The entire 10 years that I've been here, we have never had a full communications staff. So, it's historically difficult. We hope that this is going to help us retain people and hopefully recruit some, too. We hope to address the salary issue probably in the next fiscal year as well. So, this particular program should be addressed every budget year, just like any of our other employee programs that cost money, like our merit program, COLAs, things like that. It should be considered every budget year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that's the intention, then, is to bring it back annually like we do the other programs, merit program and?
Right. It would just be built into the budget, and we would either recommend continuing or not continuing based on funding and the needs at the time.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this benefit is more common in the valley, in the Phoenix metro area, not uncommon at all for communications and, and the police department. Other departments we've thought about is possibly our transit system that has a little bit of a swing shift that we'll talk about eventually, depending on how this goes. Fire Department works 48, so their shift differential is already kind of built into their pay schedule. Other people work, you know, they start, I think, public work starts early, but, you know, then they're off early, earlier in the day. So, it really fit for this department specifically. It was a way that we could cover the costs with salary savings in the departments this year, so there's no need to reallocate any funding from any other location other than the department it's already coming from. So, it seemed like a good way to show good faith that we're trying to address it. As I've talked to individual councilmembers, we do need to do a market study next year, early in the year probably, to get caught back up. But I didn't want to make a salary commitment mid-year, given the unknown of the economy with the, the way that the economy is going right now. There's too many unknowns. So, I was very uncomfortable coming to council asking for a mid-year salary adjustment. And so, this seemed like a good faith effort in showing our appreciation, giving them a little more pay, and something that we could afford this year and probably moving forward. But again, it'd be addressed at the, by council each budget year.
Okay. Yeah, I approve the program. I'm just curious how we're going to track its effectiveness. Do you have a plan in place to, to see if it reaches its, the goal that we expect?
Not completely dedicated to this, but we do track our turnovers. We can see the trending in that. Often, we do exit interviews. We don't make it mandatory, but quite a few employees participate in those, so we could always incorporate that into, to this department's particular exit interviews as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we do ask if they're leaving for another job and the reason they're taking the other job. So, if we would know in the valley, if they were leaving for Sedona or Camp Verde or the county, we, we would know that. And so, the goal of this program is to ask them not to join Sedona or the county or Camp Verde. And so, we would be able to track that. If we ended up losing one or two dispatchers specifically to, to any of those three other organizations that have communication specialists, we would know.
So, the exit interview is, is effective, do you think?
So, as a city manager, I'll, I think it is. It, it provides insight to me on what's going on in the departments. It's usually confidential. I share it with the department directors after we get the exit interviews, and they put in their, I mean, I, I'm not saying everybody's honest in their exit interview, but at least we do ask the questions about where you're going, why'd you leave, what'd you like, what'd you appreciate? And there are usually different, in the last four years, there have been different cycles. Three years ago, pay was starting to creep up as a reason for leaving. We made the market adjustments. Haven't really seen pay as a reason for leaving since we implemented the, the market study. But we do know, talking to her peers and my peers, that the adjustments that the other cities and counties made this year were significant in certain jobs.
And we're comparable?
We are not.
I mean, after the adjustment?
So, we were comparable. We were the leader for the Verde Valley in several jobs, including communication specialists and PD. We are no longer a lead payer in police officer or communication positions in the Verde Valley. We know that.
I'm just looking at this. I don't object to this in principle. I just can't imagine that this is going to affect anybody's decision. Yeah, are these eight-hour shifts? I mean, it's like $4 and $2.
$10 to $12. And it's, it's not, and I think the feedback I've received from PD command staff is that they don't, it's not going to make a big difference in their pocketbook, but the gesture means a heck of a lot. It means that, that we're willing to do something. Again, and this is on my shoulders, I was not willing to come in and recommend a salary adjustment mid-year, given the circumstances we're facing, just too many unknowns. But if, if council would prefer that we do a salary adjustment, we can go back to the drawing board and figure out what that looks like and compare those few positions. I don't like doing mid-year adjustments for positions because, in addition to communications, I am less than 50% staffed in IT. And so, it, it becomes difficult to pick and choose which ones I want to make market adjustments for mid-year as a city manager because they're all important positions. As you guys know, your internet's not working tonight. Now, we don't think it's a city issue. We, we don't believe it is. But, you know, when I look at other departments, they may not be public safety, but they are clearly critical to the operations of the city. I can tell you that the program we put in place for utilities that was approved last year that, that adjusts people based on certifications has worked. People are, are doing, they're going after their certifications, and it's only 50 cents to a dollar, depending on, on what it is. I don't remember the exact numbers, but?
It's $500 annually.
Yeah, $500 annually. And it's made a difference. It's helped with recruitment, it's helped with retention, and, and people are doing what they can to get those extra certifications now, when before, they weren't. They were staying at the level that they had to have, you know, for their job. So, I would not discount the impact that this has. And when it comes to benefits, this is another benefit that other departments in the Verde Valley aren't necessarily offering. So, when you combine this with things that our dispatchers, for example, can do that others can't. We have drone program, the?
Negotiations.
Negotiations. So, we have other jobs that our communication specialists can sign up for that in other departments, those just aren't available. So, it's just another tool, another, a way to show appreciation and help keep those people we have. I had breakfast with one of the supervisors last month. I had one person show up to my breakfast, and it was a communication supervisor, and we chit-chatted, and she just continually talked about the family atmosphere and how they take care of each other, and they cover for each other, and they work hard. And the thought is, you know, every little bit means something to them. They do not take council's actions or the city administration's actions lightly, and they, and they appreciate everything. And I think they believe us when I say we've recommended to council due to a market study for next year. So, it's probably more than you wanted, but?
Okay. Do you have any other comments?
No question. How many are we leaving due to cost of living versus, not necessarily, they're going to make more money somewhere else, but just they can't afford to stay here?
Part of this is being proactive. We have not lost very many due to pay now.
Okay. All right.
So, historically, these have been hard-to-fill positions. I understand we're in a better spot right now than we were historically with the police department, but we've struggled just as, for as long as I can remember with communications. To me, the amounts, you know, I, I am not in favor of a mid-budget year salary adjustment, and this program, I think, does help show that we do understand there, we're all filling the pinch, even, you know, just reading the news today about social security going up because of inflation and the large jumps there. And this is nowhere near in line with the inflation rates in, in the Verde Valley, or, you know, we're all feeling that squeeze. With the numbers that are in the packet, with the anticipated cost this budget year, and I do feel comfortable bringing it, you know, paying for it with the salary savings in the city overall, but I do echo the mayor's sentiments. I would like to see some kind of a marker, especially as we're going to be asked to make adjustments, I'm sure, at the end of the completion of any salary study, if one is done, if one is paid for, you know, which, which has been the recommendation from staff. So, it'd be good to see, is this a useful tool and/or do we just need to be bringing our salaries more in line with, with the market or whatever the information is? I don't know if that's possible, maybe in the exit interview or with the employees, you know, a survey or something like that, but I think that would be useful information if this is approved by, by my peers.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we can absolutely do that. Like, like Director Wilbur, trying not to call his first name, indicated we can add that question to the exit interview, and we can keep that separately. So, we get in your monthly reports from all the departments, there's an HR section on turnover, we can add a specific comment line if we see anything in PD specifically for communications or police officers as it relates to why they're leaving, if it's for salaries or for other reasons. We, we can add that.
We can also add something in the survey that the police department does, hopefully. We can work with them on that because if people are not leaving, and this is part of the reason why, you wouldn't get that on an exit interview. So, we would have to, you know, do both sides there.
So, that's the annual employee survey that PD does, and so, we can add a question about benefits. I believe Commander Garth actually do that, does that survey. So, we can add that. That's a good point about benefits.
Okay, good. All right. Sure, please.
I move to approve the new shift differential program as proposed by staff.
Second.
Okay, council, or, yeah, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Krot seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next is proposed reclassification of an hourly Recreation II Coordinator position at Range 19 to a salaried Recreation Supervisor position at Range 23.
This particular agenda item, as you mentioned, is to reclassify a Recreation Coordinator II position into a Recreation Supervisor, Recreation Center Supervisor position. The Recreation Coordinator II position is currently a Range 19, and it is FLSA non-exempt, so it is eligible for overtime. The reclassification would move it to a Range 23 and would put it into the FLSA exempt category, so it would no longer be eligible for overtime. We have changed the structure in the Parks and Recreation Department several times over the past several years. With that, we feel like now that we're fully staffed and we really know what is happening and, and who's responsible for what, we can divvy things out a little bit better to make experiences for employees and citizens more optimal. So, changing this position and having a Recreation Supervisor position would allow staff and citizens to have one direct contact who has the authority to make some higher-level decisions more on the spot than some of our employees currently do. Right now, we have four Recreation Coordinator II's and a Recreation, a Reservations Coordinator and a Guest Services Supervisor, all reporting to the director. So, there is a lot of employee time competing for making, making decisions basically by the director. So, having a Recreation Center Supervisor would kind of speed things up a little bit for employees and citizens and, and give them that one person that can respond faster to any of their issues or questions. Having this new, or this position reclassified would cost about $10,000 over a fiscal year. So, as we're partway through the fiscal year, it would be a little bit less than that for the remainder of this year. Of course, it has implications moving forward for future years as well. This structure that we are looking to move towards is very similar to what we do at the library, which has been very successful. Currently, our library supervisor is also an exempt employee and also a Range 23. So, we can definitely see similarities between the two and feel like this would be a successful move. So, with that, I'm open to any questions about the reclassification. So with that, I'm open to any questions about reclassification.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add? One of the biggest reasons I support this move is the Rec Center has a lot of weekend and night calls with the alarm systems. And Jack has been taking that call for a couple of years, every weekend and every night with all of those calls. This would add another exempt person without increasing significant cost. It's not a managerial-level position. It's much lower than we've had in the past. But it does give a second person to rotate call-through for the weekends and nights.
To assume, this person, whoever it would be, is, would be appropriate? They're qualified?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, yes.
Would we still be tracking, I know their salary, so overtime's not an issue, but do we still track the hours they clock in for? Or start running back and forth?
Typically, we don't do that for any exempt employee, unless it's a special event. Then we do try to track hours to apply to the special event. But not just this department, any department, anyone who is exempt, you just don't track your hours that way.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carrick, the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Teal, will tell you that he works 40 hours regardless of how often he's there.
Correct.
I get paid for eight hours a day. I don't care what I do for those 12 hours.
Well, I think if we can point to the library as an example of why this position's important, it seems to make sense for Parks and Rec as well. And having a second person who can make those higher-level decisions, I think is critical to making sure things are done in a timely fashion and, you know, better service for the customers, for our citizens. Any discussion at all?
No, I don't disagree. I actually agree. I think you're spot on. The Rec Center presents a unique environment where that customer service and just the availability of staff to be present, and I think it was raised earlier in the presentation, to be able to make some of those more managerial-type decisions if there is an issue, an injury, a suspected, you know, a concern, an alarm call. And even just kudos, it's nice to have someone there that can then make sure that everybody is brought in the loop. I know we've had some recent communications where we had good documentation of communication, but perhaps having this additional support might be helpful. So I don't disagree, and then we can almost assess. I think Parks and Rec has, like our city manager said earlier, has done a really good job of trial and error, trying to scale back on personnel and see where it's needed and where perhaps there might be some fluff. And I think they've been operating at the bone level now, and perhaps it's time to really focus on our communications with our clients and the level of support.
I'll just share anecdotally that when we had our fundraiser dinner for the Homeless Coalition, the internet, we couldn't get to work, for whatever reason. So we made some calls. I was surprised that we got Jack Teal on the phone while he was on vacation in Oregon and trying to diagnose what the issue was. So anecdotally, I would say that this is probably a much-needed position to offer a little better backup, so it's not all just on one person's shoulders. Shouldn't have taken that call, Jack.
Several of us took that call.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to approve reclassifying one hourly Recreation Coordinator II position at Range 19 to an exempt Recreation Center Supervisor position at Range 23, as presented. Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Wildin seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, great. All right. Next is discussion and direction of staff regarding the city manager recruitment process pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, Sections 38-431.03.81 and/or 8.3. The council may vote to convene an executive session subject to the right of any individual who may be discussed in the executive session to require that portion of the discussion to be held in open session instead. So unless we're going to be discussing any particular individual, I'd like to do as much of this as possible in an open meeting. Take it away.
All right. As council is aware, we are in the middle of our city manager recruitment process. Council gave me direction to move forward with four applicants. Since that time, two of the four applicants have dropped out of our process, and we have two candidates who are ready and willing to move forward with our interview process. The purpose of tonight is to make sure council is informed that our candidate pool has dropped down from four to two. And then also make sure council is aware that one other candidate has expressed interest. So council could decide to add a third candidate into the mix, if they would like. And really, in the spirit of transparency and, you know, being informed, I just really want to make sure council has an opportunity to discuss and agree on moving forward with two, because it's less than what we discussed before, or give staff direction that they want to move in a different direction. So that's the purpose of this tonight, to see what direction council would like to move. And then if council does not want to move forward with only two, discuss what that looks like.
Let's discuss what that looks like, just briefly now, if you don't mind. What are our options, aside from, you know, what we know, interviewing the applicants that are ready and willing, excuse me?
Right. So if we do not move forward with interviews now, you pretty much have two options. You can either decide to move forward with another search internal, like we just did, where I would lead the search and do the ad and make everything work behind the scenes. Or you can look at a consultant, like we did three years ago, and have an executive search firm lead that type of recruitment. Those are the two main options I see for you, if you don't want to move ahead with interviews. If you want to go back out, you could also have the option to invite the applicants who are ready to move forward. You can either decide to see if they just want to be considered and then consider them with a new batch. Or you could just decide, yes, they're definitely going to be invited to interviews, no matter what, and move forward that way with these particular applicants.
Okay. Okay. Questions for Ms. Wilber at this point? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry if it's helpful. I did receive some background information on two of the candidates. I'd prefer to discuss those in executive session. And if you wanted to talk about the third applicant, I would also, if it pleases council in executive session, we could talk about that third applicant. Right now, it is, and again, it's my recommendation that you hire a consultant and move forward with recruitment. But if you wanted to talk about those three applicants, you know, we can absolutely do that. We have saved the dates, the 28th and 29th. We haven't canceled anything. So those two candidates are still on notice to come in, if it pleases council. And I'm sure if council wanted to interview the third candidate, we could make that happen rather easily. So it's at your pleasure.
Okay.
I definitely don't think two is enough. So that, for me, that takes that off the table. So in my mind, the options would be still go forward with three or start over. That's...
Or what?
Start over with a search firm.
With a firm, a professional, okay. All right. Other councilmembers?
I think it's hard to comment, where I'm also trying to read some of the background information. So I'm going to skim and let the others comment and maybe circle back.
Sure.
I think I would agree with Councilmember Wildin. Interview the three. I don't think interviewing the two would do us much good. The third one would give us a better opportunity to evaluate the strengths and weaknesses of all three of the candidates. And we started out with four. Three would still be an acceptable number. But two is, I agree, it's getting down to flip of a coin and not really having, I think, a good enough spread to evaluate from.
Yeah, I'll just say that I was disappointed that we had, you know, the two drop out. And I feel like it was already pretty slim, just having to for-coment interviews. So I would lean towards starting a new search process. And I think, you know, our investment in a professional firm would probably go a long way. It's not a reflection on your efforts at all.
I do not take it that way. I, like I mentioned when we had this discussion first, I recognize that a professional firm has way more of a network than I do for this. They do this every day for their living. They are experts in executive recruitment. It's, it is what it is, you know? I don't do that every day. I do not take offense to that at all.
And Mr. Mayor, the applicant pool that we started with, the 34, I believe it was, and now 35, was solid. You know, a lot of experience applied, so I don't think that's it. I do think the other thing the outside firm would provide is it would signal to possible, I talked to another city manager, and she said she would not have applied for our job because we did it internally. A couple of different reasons. One is, there was an assumption, maybe, that there's maybe an inside candidate that was going to get the job, and so not to go through the effort. And the other signal was the willingness of the council to spend cash. It sent a signal of the conservative nature of our council. I just thought it was interesting that that manager gave me that feedback. So I think going with an outside firm is definitely the way to go if you decide to go out. I think it'll send a great signal out there. And again, we had, I think we counted five city managers from Arizona that applied, you know, and then we had a couple deputies from other organizations that applied. We had people from out-of-state, Texas, Iowa, apply. So I think the word was out there. I just think you would get another, you'd get a different group of people to apply, if it pleases council.
Does that mean that the two that we were going to interview, would they just basically start over?
That's at the pleasure of council. So you can include them, not include them. The recruiter will do things a little differently, possibly. They'll probably do either a Zoom interview, or they'll probably do other conversations with the applicants. And so it was really what pleases council. But my recommendation is to start over, so that they're in the complete process. If you go with an outside firm, if you ask us to do it, then we probably don't need them to go through that process again.
Yeah, I would say outside firm, and they start over. So why keep two spots that could be going to somebody else?
Right. And I think the firm would appreciate them having to reapply, so they go through the proper steps with that particular firm.
I'd like to move Ron Stave.
Second.
Mr. City Attorney, I don't believe that's on the agenda.
Well...
Could we interview the three? And if we don't like the three, then send it to the firm to post?
That's an option, too.
I'm not holding our breath on us getting lucky, but if we get lucky, then...
If we did that, we wouldn't get the quality of starting over, because I think there's going to be people coming out of the woodwork that hadn't applied before. So I would rather see us start over.
Yeah, I think, and it's a timing issue, too, I feel. If we, just in an effort of being more efficient with our time and theirs, I think I'd prefer that they would start over. And, you know, if we moved to hire a firm, I think we'll get this in place, hopefully, in short order. And then they can quickly reapply, and we don't lose, you know, weeks that I'd rather not lose.
If it's helpful, my goal, if you decide to go with an outside firm, would be to do all the work to figure out who we could possibly recommend and bring it back at the next council meeting, if possible. I know the deadline is Thursday for that, but we might hopefully have a little wiggle room on that. Thursday's also a busy day with city attorney interviews. So regardless, that would probably be the same, regardless of whether or not you did the interviews, because the interviews are in between now and that next council meeting, if it helps council make a decision.
I see some puzzled look, Mr. Mayor. So interviews are on the 28th or 29th. We would put the packet in by Thursday or Friday, please. So it wouldn't come to council to make a decision on going to selecting the firm until November 1st. So if you selected someone over that weekend, then we would cancel the agenda item, you know, for the first. If you didn't make a hire on the weekend, then we already have it on the agenda for the first. There are several firms that are already under contract, on contracts, that we can share. We've done a little bit of, Jeff has done some research for us. So we've got, I think, three or four firms in mind that we would be able to present to council if you so choose.
Well, I think I would prefer to start over as opposed to interviewing people next week with a good chance that we'd say, well, maybe we should start over, and then have to interview again. I'd kind of like to try to streamline it and get it all done in one shot, if possible.
That's the way I'm leaning as well. This is a significant dedication of time. And it's not just our time up here, it's our staff time as well. And I don't take, just especially, you know, there are some items of concern. And I really would have preferred a broader candidate pool with the time, effort, and analysis that we do put into this process. To me, there is the financial cost. I think we were all briefed that that would be a potential item that we'd have to pay for. I don't know that I'm as positive that the firm will bring us more qualified candidates, though, because I think that Amanda, Ms. Wilber, did post, and, you know, the spots apart from the out-of-state postings, perhaps. But I just, I don't want to waste staff time with very slim, just a narrow candidate pool at this time.
Well, without, to say we can't name names right now, I think we have, well, two candidates that we've decided we did want to interview at one time, and one possible, maybe, that's thrown the hat in the ring. And out of those three, there's two that I wouldn't mind talking to and interviewing. So I don't know which way to go. Those two I'd like to talk to?
So then a question along those lines, because they have invested quite a bit of time in the application process as well.
The candidates.
The candidates. So is there any merit to having a streamlined interview process? I don't want to cut corners where we don't necessarily, I don't see the urgency, and I don't, I'm not opposed to the cost. But I do appreciate their time investment in this process as well, and do want to respect that as well. So not to waffle, but is there any merit to a shorter process?
So to come on that, then maybe, maybe we interview them. Maybe if we see, maybe we find somebody out of there, and we eliminate the whole recruitment process for a second time.
So, Mr. Mayor, council, the interview process is set up at your pleasure. So right now, it's a two-day event, really, to bring back the top candidates for Saturday. So that may or may not be needed. The Saturday may not be needed. And we can reduce the process a little bit. With, let's say, three applicants, we can set up probably four sessions, maybe three. And, you know, so it's a half a day rotating through that process. But the amount of prep work for Amanda... But the amount of prep work for Amanda and Steam is still there. And I, as an applicant, the travel and the prep, whether it's one day or two days and whether it's three meetings or five, is still significant.
Well, is it's going to be public then?
And it, and as Mr. Horton was saying, you know, it's probably public now if someone were to ask for the names or whatever. And, and at this point, we'd have to debate it when we got the public records request, but that's not, that's not a surprise. I'm not that concerned about the names at this point, given the applicants and their situations. So I'm not that concerned about the, the privacy, but it is a, a amount of effort to prepare for this process for the applicants. I would only encourage you to bring them in if one of your picks is in that three. If your city manager isn't in there, then you probably are wasting their time. And while we all want to be interviewed, we don't want to do it just for fun.
Well, then, maybe we should move into executive session so where we can discuss these individuals specifically and try to decide whether we want to move on based on that.
I move we enter into executive session for the discussion under A1 and A3 of the city manager recruitment process.
Okay. I'll second. Okay. Councilmember Henry made the motion and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are in session. Do you want to go in the back or kick everyone out?